I'd like to welcome you to the March 25th Washtugal City Council Workshop Meeting. Rose, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Boger. Councilmember Polinsky.
Here.
Councilmember McDaniel.
Here.
Councilmember Schumaker.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Lindsay.
Here.
Councilmember Greenlee.
Here.
Councilmember Boger indicated that he may be a few minutes late this evening. Are there any members of the public that would like to address council? Yes, Melissa, come on up.
Good evening. I know most of you. Melissa Smith, I'm the Camas City Council, but my address is 1235 Northwest 7th Avenue, Camas, Washington. I am your RTC representative, and I am the goofball that sent you thirty emails accidentally, but I'll say it was an email glitch. So, but you have, I didn't attach the email, but a few people complained that they weren't able to open up the documents. So, you had the documents that I had sent from the RTC meeting. And other than that, if you have any questions, just want to know how often you want to see me regarding RTC. I know Paul attends, so he's doing a good job probably relaying any information that's going on, but it's pretty light right now. Everybody's just kind of in a holding pattern at this point, so that's all I want. Yes, ma'am?
I know Scott and David Scott. I really have a problem with Scott Higgins and David Scott. I kept calling them, but just call them both Scott. Anyways, our city administrator here asked me if I'd go see Camas about C-Trans on a quarterly basis, right? Was that an agreement between the two of you, or did you just pin it down?
I think, I'm trying to remember if it said quarterly, but did the email from Nina say quarterly?
Yeah, so I need to know what my quarter is, I guess.
Right. I'll work with Nina on that. But I think you're tentatively scheduled for the-
Or mid-April.
The fifteenth.
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth, right.
Yeah, I look forward to seeing you.
Yep, so we, I don't, I would think that'd be great.
We can try to more formalize so that you can plan ahead.
Okay. Well, if you have any questions or anything, just email me, and go ahead.
Real quick, I just wanted to say thank you for the work you do with the RTC.
Well, thank you.
I know it takes a lot of time.
It was, the first year was a learning, it's still a learning process. It's a big group and big books, right, Paul?
Yes.
So, thank you, all right.
So, it's quiet right now even with all the upheaval over-
Yeah, we aren't having a meeting in March because we don't have enough on the agenda. So, yeah, like I said, because everything's tied up at the state level, pretty much, there's not much for us to discuss.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions?
I just wanted to be clear, this resolution is a proposal that has not yet been discussed or voted on in RTC.
Correct. We tabled, we voted and tabled that because Commissioner Medor brought it up and, at the meeting, and wanted to pass it at the same meeting, and we all kind of had heartburn with that because we didn't have time to review it or go back to our cities and discuss it. And that's not proper procedural issue, so we tabled it.
Thank you, Melissa.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else that would like to address council?
What can I talk about? Anything?
You may talk about anything.
This week, I attended the County, Clark County Commissioners' meeting, and they adopted a resolution for prayer before the meeting. I suggested to them that when you offer a prayer, you keep it short. You ask God to bless the meeting, bless the people that are there, give them the wisdom, the knowledge, the understanding of making the right decisions, and to keep it short. And the resolution they passed, I think it's for two minutes. In two minutes, you're going to have all kinds of denominations out there trying to twist your arm on what you should do or shouldn't do. I remember this country when it was a free country, and I miss that. I loved my country when it was free. It bothers me to see the way it is right now. We're being lied to, we're being cheated, and we're being deceived out of millions of dollars in this community right now, and your people aren't even aware of it. It's not that you're corrupt or anything, but you're being deceived with false information. It's been going on for fifty years. I've got a list of eighty items here of all the things that event that passed, happened the past fifty years, all the different things. It started out years ago in Southern California, back in the forties. They used to burn the trash out in the backyard once a week. Then the winter would come around, and they had fires around the smudge pots, around the orange groves. Now, you talk about smog, that's smog. Then the environmentalists came in and started making some noise. And you know what? They had a right to. What they did was pretty good. Then the government came in and passed catalytic converters on the car to get rid of all the bad stuff in the air, and that was good. But it was so successful that they inherited this method of getting approval by deceiving people for the past fifty years on false information. And I think I've shared some of this with you before. My kids were terrified because they thought California was going to fall in the ocean. Then the water was, there was a water shortage, and then when there wasn't a water shortage. Then my kid went to UC Davis, and he came back from graduation. He said, "Dad, get out of the building and developing business." And I says, "Why?" He said, "Don't you know what's going on, Dad? He says, "There's no more land. You people have a gold mine out here. I'm not asking you to have massive growth. I'm just letting free enterprise to take over." Right now, what you're doing is you're giving a lot of people what they want. And what they want is a job, they want economy to pick up, they go to school, they get a degree, they go to work, then they're looking for a place to live. Right now, the government is furnishing affordable housing for about $500 more than what they should be charging if it was free enterprise. The reason I know that, because I built a whole bunch of those things. Over 200,000 people have lived in the units that I've lived in over the years. It's taken a long time. I'm only making you aware, I'm not accusing you guys of doing anything crooked here, but I'm real disturbed. For some, for our country to get weak the way it is, right now, our countries are at a pivot point. We're losing our country. People are acting like nothing's happening to it. And you've got all these Mickey Mouse bureaucrats out there in Washington trying to plug up the holes in our economy by attacking the deficit. And they're all plugging up all these hundred little holes that they created, and they're forgetting about the big hole in the back of the boat, the sink in the boat called sixteen trillion dollars. Nobody has made, come up with any plan to do that.
Joe, I need you to wrap up.
Okay, I'm sorry. There's other things to talk about. The main thing is, I'd like to talk to you about QUITA later on. If I was a taxpayer, I'd want to look into what's going on there. I wouldn't give you any more tax money for QUITA, and I can say, tell you why.
Thanks, Joe. Anyone else from the public that would like to address council? Yes.
Good evening. Good evening. My name's John McConaughey. My address is 4634 Rolling Meadows Drive in Washtugal. I was a bit disturbed by the resolution that the council is considering on opposing the CRC. And, you know, following the CRC in the newspapers for the past, I don't know how long it's been, seems like a very long time, I am disturbed by some of the things I've seen, like, you know, this five-foot business. I mean, how did they miss that? One thing I really liked about the CRC, though, was that it was going to put in light rail to Clark County and bike paths, and I thought that was a very good thing. Because, you know, it's that sort of infrastructure, the light rails, the bike paths, the schools, the museums, you know, that's what makes a great community. That's what makes great cities, places where we want to be. And so, I am disappointed that the, that we'd even consider a resolution that would basically just come out so vehemently. I mean, half this thing is about opposing light rail. You'd think that, that mass transit was a bad thing. I think it's a good thing. I, now, I could grudgingly go along with the rest of this if we strike out all the references to light rail. And that's what I encourage the council to do. Go ahead, strike out all the references to light rail in this thing, and then you can pass it. And yes, there's a lot to be, complain about with the references to the five-feet bridge height and the, and the general cost, and how could they spend so much time and money designing the thing? I don't know. But I think that the light rail is a good thing, and I hope you can see to it to reconsider your resolution with striking the light opposition to light rail. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else that would like to address council? Mike?
Mike Briggs, 286 St. West 9th, Washtugal. This is just a procedural question. I was talking to Brent Boger earlier, and he said that anything, generally, the council decided informally that anything discussed at the workshop would not be acted upon in the immediate following meeting. Is that true?
Council can change their rules at any point.
Okay, that's cool. Having known that, then, would it be to my benefit to make a statement now or wait to the formal council meeting? Because I don't know if it carries more weight legislatively with you folks, if it's in workshop, or if it's actually a statement made before council in the meeting.
Totally up to you.
Well, I know it's up to me, Mayor. I know, I do. I have a call, and I'm not filling it well, but what I want to know is, does my statement make more weight to you folks if it's made as a statement to the city of Washtugal during session or in workshop? Anybody know?
I think it makes a difference.
Okay, with not knowing, I will take it that it doesn't matter, and I will make my statement now. And I practice this, and I'm, I think I've got it under three minutes.
You're already down to two.
Can you give me a little bit of time here?
No.
If you cannot, I will wait for the meeting.
Mike, as long as you can keep it succinct.
Mayor Guard, Council of Washtugal. As a concerned citizen of Washtugal, I'm opposed to have my site, my city create any kind of resolution pro or con regarding the CRC project. This is a collaborative project that is eleven years in the making, legislatively concerns the state of Oregon and the state of Washington and our federal government. The project's future at this very moment lies within the state of Washington legislation. Within a short timeframe, possibly thirty days, the fate of this important project will be known with the state either passing or rejecting the current CRC funding package. The rejection will mark the end of the CRC project and for any bridge project for many years to come due to the lack of further federal support and the lack, if any, sponsor to try it again. For the relatively small city of Washtugal to create and forward an unsolicited and legislatively non-binding resolution is not only wrong, it is a waste of Washtugal's meager financial resources and energies. I see no gain in this for Washtugal and only possible severe downside repercussions. This is not a city of Washtugal project. This is a state of Washington project. That, yet, the city has not been solicited to give its opinion by the state. No city in any state has taken, has been asked to give its opinion to the state. The city does not have the jurisdiction to issue any comments upon this collaborative state project. The following communities have either said they are not going to take a position on this project or have decided to stay neutral, and I believe it's very wise. These communities are Camas, Battleground, Ridgefield, La Center, Woodland, Kalama, and Longview. Washtugal's personal opinion can have no legislative effect on this project. The Eighteenth District, three legislative representatives, of whom Washtugal is represented by, are Senator Rivers, Representative Vick, and Representative Pike, have already stated in print they are not for the CRC project. They do not need to be reminded by the city of Washtugal where they stand. Washtugal is in desperate need for more business to our community. Forgive me. The business community is overwhelming, overwhelmingly in support of this project. Wafer Tech is currently looking to increase capacity for manufacturing. A multi-billion dollar project is being considered right now. Right there, in the front page. Inslee to visit Wafer Tech in Camas. That's what this is about. Sharp Microelectronics, Sharp Labs, Keel Sarah, N-Lite, Linear Technology, Fred Meyer, Killian Pacific, Gwenda Mir Realtors, Ed Lynch Company, Identity Clark County, Riverview Bank, Clark College, and many, many more are endorsing this project. Our ports are for this new bridge project, the port of Camas-Washugal, the port of Kalama, the port of Longview, the port of Vancouver, the port of Woodland. Labor is in support of this project. Washtugal has joined with Camas and the port to create CWEDA, the Camas-Washugal Economic Development Association, to help locate and bring forth business to our fair city. Why would the city, on one hand, spend money to support business recruitment by spending money to do so with SWEETA, but on the other hand, issue a resolution which is clearly against what business truly wants? That would be anti-business. Washtugal has been making many envoys who work alongside with its neighbor, the city of Camas. I have seen this with recent successful merger, the Fire Protection Services with the joint venture of Camas and CW Port with SWEETA, with the cooperation between police departments, with the camaraderie exhibited between mayors of Washtugal and Camas. Washtugal's made it very known, it wants to be a good and supportive business partner with Camas and all of East County. Why, then, would Washtugal now create such a resolution, which would fly in the face of this newfound cooperation? What could Washtugal gain? More to the point, what could Washtugal lose? I am 100% in favor of every single citizen to contact their state representative and making known their wants on this project. This is exactly what our local representatives are for. But what is not correct is to take the path to have a small city being pressured by outside interests, to push forward a resolution from the city of Washtugal to the state of Washington. No, I do not think this is a good thing for Washtugal, nor do I think it is a good thing to have Washtugal being pressured into doing so. City of Council, or City of Washtugal, do not create any non-binding and unsolicited resolution against the CRC project. It is not necessary, can legislatively do nothing, and has the real potential of doing harm to the city I cherish. Washtugal, please stay neutral. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else that would like to address council?
Just a question. Is it the intent on the two agendas here tonight to discuss the CRC resolution and then at the regular city council meeting, Agenda Bill 13, adopt the resolution? Maybe I missed something, but has this resolution been available for public review for any period of time prior to tonight?
I believe that is potentially the action of the council tonight between this meeting and the regular meeting, and I believe the resolution went up on the website, so with the agenda packet, it's Rose Thursday.
So, it hasn't been brought up in any previous workshop or city council meeting?
The exact document that you have in your hand, no. The concept of a resolution and potentially passing one this evening, yes.
Well, I guess my personal view is there's a lot of wheres', and I'm not sure if all these wheres' are exactly completely accurate, and I just think maybe, well, my personal view is the CRC is not going to happen because there's not going to be any federal money because the federal government's already said if there's no light rail, there's no money, so the whole thing's kind of moot anyhow. But I think on a resolution like this, we should give the public one meeting period, two weeks, to look over all the wheres', so that they could come in and comment on the specifics. So, I guess my statement is I would be opposed to discussing it at the workshop and then coming right back and passing it at the meeting tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else that would like to address council?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Marilyn Terrell at 950 G Street. There are two items on the agenda tonight, and both of which I would like to comment on. The first is to remind you that on January the fourth, what, five years ago, when you were first elected Mr. Mayor, I stood here at the end of the session and kept saying inappropriate, 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 which had to do with a resolution involving abortions or not, against abortions or something of that measure. And city council was going to take, make a resolution about abortions, and, as I said, it was inappropriate. I think this is inappropriate too, just as inappropriate. Has nothing to do with the city of Washtugal, you're just wasting Mr. English's time and everybody else's. The other thing is matter of prayer. I'm a Unitarian Universalist. It's a rare Sunday that I don't go to church. We Unitarians have seven principles. I'm not going to read the seven principles here to you, but I want you to say, one of them is the right of conscience and the use of the democratic process in society, in our congregations, and in society at large. I think prayer is a fine thing, and I think that we should all do so should we wish to, but I don't think doing it in public is appropriate. There are people here who do not approve a prayer or who do not wish you to pray for their God, whatever that might be. I do believe strongly in separation of church and state, and this is not church.
Thank you, Marilyn. Anyone else that would like to address public? The council, excuse me. Okay, we will head into our agenda. And Marilyn, actually, it was just over three years. There's many times it feels like it was four years ago.
I'm much younger than you.
Weren't we all?
Oh, he needs a president, never mind.
Okay, first item under new business is a resolution concerning the Columbia River Crossing. Dave?
Thank you, Mayor, council. In your packet this evening is a draft resolution regarding the Columbia River Crossing project. As you know, you've seen the resolution over this last week and had an opportunity to provide feedback or input to me during that time before we got it ready for the packet. So, what you have before you is a draft. I would point out that everything in the resolution, all of the recitals, the whereas comments, are derived from information that was provided to me by council members, whether it was a copy of a resolution that was passed by another political entity, specifically Oregon House Republicans, I believe, was one that was passed, and Clark County. There was a copy of a resolution that was considered by the city of Battleground that was provided to me, and then individual council members provided very specific language to me. And in the interest of accommodating all of the input from all of the council members that participated, I crafted this document where I received specific language. I put that specific language in exactly as I received it. I did make a decision about where to put it in the document to try to have it flow. With respect to the example resolutions that I received, I extracted information from those, did some paraphrasing, and again, decided where to place that. And then in terms of the five points of the resolution at the end, looked at the examples and also specific language from council members. So, all of that in summary is to say, this document is a council document, really. I did author this, but I authored it based on specific language from council members and examples of language from other entities. Did my best to craft it in this form for you. And as we discussed at your last workshop, given the timing that you're contemplating for this, I would anticipate potentially getting some direction, if you would, after your conversation about this document now, such that I could make, Rose and I could make adjustments to the draft, if necessary, during the break between your workshop and the regular meeting, so that you would have a revision if it's the desire of the council for your consideration for action at your regular meeting later today. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions about how I put this together.
Your disclaimers are noted. Thank you for your efforts. This is indeed a council project, and the council will assume responsibility for it. That's what we do. I had a question that I would like to ask of another member. I haven't had a chance to ask it because I've been out of town, and I apologize, kind of Joe, I think you're the author of it. There was a 125% increase in something, I forgot what it was. And it's that figure of 125% that I'm trying to nail down. I'm concerned about that particular figure.
I have those documents that I thought, do you have that in your, in your mind?
Right. I see it here. It's the seventh recital. A commute time penalty of 125% over, I'll just read it, "So, light rail is an inferior transit option for Clark County transit riders who enjoy the C-Trans Express buses." So, I guess that's the existing service, since it is inflexible and would impose a commute time penalty of 125%.
So, that's based on the amount of time, as it, or is it based on the speed of the train versus the speed of the bus? Because the train is significantly slower than the bus, I do know that. I didn't have the figures on the time.
Yeah, I don't have the exact figures in front of me either. I don't have all the documentation in front of me here. But that was a, that was taken from, David, can you help me there? Was it the, it was that was taken from the Oregon documentation? That seems to me like where it's, where it's from.
I believe that may have come from the Oregon House Caucus.
What I was going to suggest was instead of putting a figure in there, which will be attacked and affect the credibility, if we said something along the lines of, "Dave, I need your help here," there's a substantial reduction in, or increase in commute time by users of the light rail versus users of the current express buses.
That's funny. Yeah, I don't mind striking the actual number because that's-
I think the number is based on a lot of factors.
It's all based on presumption of the future, which none of us-
Yes, it's an estimate.
-predict anyways.
It's a guesstimate.
Yes. So-
So, I offer that thought for my colleagues, and I leave it in your hands.
It was comparing, of course, the speed of the buses versus the actual, and it's the CRC's documentation that we're using.
And we know the speed of the buses.
We know the speed of buses.
We also know that the average speed of the light rail in Oregon right now, or in Portland right now, is about 13 miles an hour. So-
So, it takes longer on the train.
Yes, it does. But I'm concerned about laying those figures out there to be attacked, which would then bring into question the credibility of the entire presentation, whereas if we simply say, "There's a premium to pay here if you're going to go this route, not only in money but in time."
Right.
Something along those lines.
I completely concur. I have no problem with that.
Yes, one of the questions that I would ask on that one, while you're on that one, is, is that inaccurate? Is it even inaccurate?
Well, those are CRC figures. They've taken the amount of time that, the CRC didn't state it this way, but they did the math on what it takes right now on the bus, on the express bus, compared to how long they expect it to take. Again, it's taking past history that's fact.
I get that.
Yeah.
I guess my question is, is the basis for the recital, do we have that?
You can find similar information in Randall Woodtoole's book, Gridlock. And he's an Oregon resident?
The reason I asked the question, even Senator- The reason I asked the question, even Senator Rivers was here, that said that it is in the CRC project will speed your commute up by one minute. Would save you...
He wasn't talking about light rail, though, whereas this one's referring, that was talking about the bridge.
I'm not...
Wasn't talking about the light rail.
That's why I'm asking if we have it. What I want to try and make sure, and you all get to do whatever the majority of you want to do, is to try and keep you as close to accurate on every one of these as possible as far as this is going out, so.
And the difficulty of the accuracy is my concern.
You could always just say, and would impose a commute time increase. You don't have to stake a percentage.
Yeah.
Because it's all presumption on that.
Sure. Something along those lines, Dave. You're better at word spitting this than we are. And thank you for your efforts. I know that was a pain in the neck.
Well, I want to go back to the beginning. At the town hall meeting, nine people spoke. Three were definitely against the Columbia River Crossing period. Six were for it, and two with reservations about light rail, but not reservations about the bridge. So if we're here to represent Waschuggal, and six people were for it, and three people were against it, I think that that isn't a correct, I mean, we're, somehow this is not taking us where we want to be.
Dave? I didn't agree with it that way at all. But beyond that, there are lots of sources of information, of information that are available to council members. How many times do you get buttonholed in the Safeway, the Starbucks, the Quiznos, anytime you're out, by people who want to talk about an issue? And a lot of those people that have talked to me, I have found one person that I've talked with at any length that was in favor of it.
And I think that is anecdotal. We sat in a meeting where people took time to come to our meeting and express how they felt.
And that's a sampling of opinion, a very small sample.
But each one of us have, I'm sure, had people come to us personally, but those weren't people who got up in, or through email. Those weren't people who got up and said here how they felt. And I think that is important if we're representing Waschuggal.
Would you feel that way if they were opposed?
Yes, I would.
Okay.
Yes, I would. I would. Very definitely, I would.
Connie Joe?
Well, I have notes from that meeting that I took as we sat here, and this is my, the ones, I didn't follow my procedure properly, so I scribbled a lot. This was the no, this was the yes. Jeff Gard, Bob Freeman, Robert Fulmer, Diana, Dan Kersey, Jim Ashley, Mr. Gretschmar, I think is how you say his name, I'm not sure, Larry Wagner, Harvey Olson. I have a letter that I'd like to put into the record.
And I said, yes, I always didn't favor of it.
No, I'm not, I'm not finished yet. I'm not finished with my statement. I'm listing the people that spoke, and I have Marilyn Terrell talk to me personally. You never mentioned the, you mentioned C-Trans and small vans. I recall you ever mentioning anything about the CRC. But my point being that people have said they wanted to go forward with the bridge the way it was, with Mike Briggs. Out of that list that I just read. Oh, and there's a Camas man, and I didn't read him just now because he's not from Waschuggal.
Maybe it was Harvey Olson.
Yes, he is. He lives down the street from me.
It's Harvey. Okay.
And Diana, so two. Bridge lift impact. So only two specifically said they wanted it just the way it stands. Numerous of those said they didn't like the light rail, they didn't like the crime. They said, Jeff Gard said, not as proposed, no light rail, please. Robert Fulmer said, no light rail, he didn't want the crime. I mean, I don't want to read all of this. It's just reiterating things that we've already lived through. The majority did not say that they wanted it. There weren't six people that said yes. There were three people that said yes out of the, out of the group. And if I may, at this time, Rose has very graciously made copies for all of us. If I can bury them here. What do I do?
About 10 minutes.
Oh, it's under this paper. I received via email, if you would, here, I'll give you part. Is this the right time for this? I think it is. A gentleman named Greg Brown, who lives in Waschuggal, and he submitted his email, his address, I mean, is 131651 Street, 51st Street. I had this the morning of the town hall, but I didn't understand procedure. I should have read it into the, into the, at the time, so it could have been in the minute, minutes then, but I'd like to do it now, if I may, since...
You want to read it into the record?
I, if you, if it doesn't need to be done. All I know is that his thing is, I do not support Max as part of the CRC. He's another one that voices an opinion against light rail, so that's...
At some point, you all need to make some decisions.
Of course.
We can continue, everybody in the table can continue to reach back to phone calls that you received, things that you've gotten at the store, emails or any of that.
Well, just because I feel as to just that day I wanted to have...
There wasn't a meeting to read it into the record of. It was a town hall. It wasn't a, it wasn't a meeting that we normally would even, but that being the case, again, I believe...
Were there minutes taken that day and so forth? So I thought there were actual records that it would have been impacting. Kind of like my notes.
I think that's up to you whether it impacts it or not. I, again, I think you called for a town hall meeting to discuss transportation issues with residents of Waschuggal. And residents, some residents of Waschuggal and others made the time to be here for it.
He wasn't able to. He had responsibilities.
I would bet there were a lot of people that weren't able to. Where they stand, I don't know. At some point, though, we can continue to count people on both sides of the ledger all we want. I think if I heard you correctly at the last meeting, you all want to move quickly towards something. Dave?
I would agree with my friend, the mayor. I think it's inherent upon us as council members to take responsibility for the views that we've got and the way that we got them, and decide what we want to do about the resolution. We can spend the night and beyond debating how we scored the town hall meeting and everything else. Let's get to the point. The point is, up or down on the resolution?
Okay.
I'm not totally convinced on this, on this resolution. I don't like phrases that, for instance, whereas light rail is an inferior transit option. I think as a city of Waschuggal, we should be stating things very neutrally, and that sounds pretty opinionated to me. Other resolutions that I have looked at, one being Yakult, were quite a bit more condensed, short and to the point. I think this is pretty, pretty long and drawn out. From the town hall meeting, I, the general consensus that I heard was that Waschuggal citizens were not in favor of CRC in its current form. So I'm not completely against a resolution. I'm not, I'm not sold on this one. But I too believe that our representatives are not in favor of CRC, and I also believe that staying neutral is, could be a good option for the city of Waschuggal. The last thing I would want is for Waschuggal to come across as anti-business or anti-economic development. So I just also question where federal, federal and Washington state funding will come from, therefore, you know, potentially not allowing CRC to continue regardless if we write a resolution or not, so.
Dave?
I understand you're not wanting to criticize light rail like that. So would you agree that it's expensive, underused, poorly funded, and inflexible? Let's be specific. And you don't have to make a judgment on it, that it's good, bad, or inferior, or whatever. These things are documentable. With all due respect, I thought that the major point was that not the details of the resolution, but does it make sense to go forward with a resolution?
That'll be resolved in the...
That's, that's the fundamental question that I think needs to be debated before we spend much time on verbiage.
Jennifer?
Yes. I too have concerns with much of this language. I'm reading a lot of inflammatory statements, quite frankly, and I'm a little concerned about it. It's two and a half pages long. Also, another concern. I think we could probably say what we want to say in a lot shorter amount of time if we do indeed want to pass a resolution. When you're using words like exorbitant, inferior, unfair, and, you know, bringing TRIMET into the resolution, it doesn't make any sense to me because we're going to be dealing with it on a locally, on a local version as our C-Trans, not necessarily TRIMET, which is important. So I, going through this, I just see, I was not impressed with the resolution. I'm sorry. I just was not. Not, not anything personal to the person that designed it, Dave, but the statements were not grouped in any sort of logical manner. I don't agree with much of the state, many of the statements here, frankly. And I'm concerned that, you know, I, after we had coffee that day, Karen, we, I emailed Dave Scott and I said, can you please let me know if Camas or any other Clark County or Multnomah County cities are considering resolutions for or against the CRC? I wanted to know, you know, what's happening out there. Are there, I mean, are other cities stepping up to the plate and saying yes or no? And he, if you want to share your email and the information that you gave me with the rest of the council, it's important.
I could pull that up. I think I can remember. Clark County, the Clark County Board, Clark County Commissioners certainly has passed, has passed a resolution against the CRC. Town of Yakult did the same. Their document looked to me that it was essentially taken from the Board of Clark County Commissioners document. Years ago, back in '08, the city of Vancouver was required to express an opinion regarding a locally preferred alternative as part of the EIS process that was being undertaken at the time. And I'm not sure why it was that they were required to do that, but they were, and they did, and it's the current locally preferred alternative. So they, I guess you would say that's a support for what it was. Not aware, I checked with colleagues, not aware of other communities, cities in Clark County that are taking a position or considering a position either way, although Battleground, as you probably know, did deliberate the issue recently, very recently, and decided on a split vote. I think it was a four to three vote to not take a position via resolution on the project. On the Oregon side, the city of Portland, similarly to the city of Vancouver, back in '08, was required to do something as part of the EIS process. So they are, they were supportive of the locally preferred alternative. They had some different details in there. There's some differences of opinion between the two cities of Vancouver and Portland. I didn't see anything in the brief research I did of other cities in Multnomah County or Clackamas County doing anything. Clackamas County also voted, considered, and voted not to stake out a position on the crossing. They did send a letter to TRIMET about the Milwaukee, the Portland-Milwaukee line. They have, Clackamas County Commissioners have concerns about the Portland-Milwaukee line. The city of Tigard has a legislative agenda, as many communities have, and on their legislative agenda, among many items, so there wasn't anything highlighting this particular project. It's one of many project, or many issues on their legislative agenda. They did come out as supportive of this particular project. That's the extent of the information that I saw out there.
Thank you. So essentially, what that is telling me is that we were going to be standing out in the, in our county and other counties, Multnomah. I'm just concerned. I, I know that our state representatives and our senator are fighting hard against this project, and I, I don't, that's probably where the fight needs to happen. I don't know if it needs to happen at the municipal level. Go ahead.
Again, I'll defend Dave a little bit in the information that you have in front of you. This isn't something that, at a staff level, we did anything other than took what was sent from council members and put it in.
Yeah.
I specifically asked Dave, not to spend any time massaging this, putting it into any order or anything else, having absolutely no idea what you all would do with this tonight, if you're going to amend pieces of it, toss out pieces of it, any of that. So all we did was took what was supplied, put them onto the paper, gave a little bit of form to it, and that's what you've got in front of you. This is not a recommendation from the administration of a resolution that you should consider passing. I believe that this is a resolution, a draft resolution, that was put together by the staff. I don't believe it is a resol, draft resolution that was put together by the staff with the input that we received from council members for your consideration tonight of what you may or may not do with it in any way, shape, or form. Brent?
I'm sorry I was late. I had business conflict. I would support a resolution that was focused on Waschuggal. Generalized grievances with light rail, as much as I may personally agree with them, I don't think that's appropriate for us as a council to convey. But I would support a resolution that expressed the effects on 205, which is critical to our residents and their commutes, perhaps tolling, certainly increased traffic if they do toll the I-5 Bridge. Also, during our town hall, there was discussion about the impact of funding of some of our critical transportation needs we have here, such as Highway 14, 32nd, and such things that might be impacted by, you know, we all know this is, project will very likely suck up all the local funding for years to come that will impact the city. And I know there's disagreement on this point, but I, I don't have a problem conveying what we think are the opinions of our residents on light rail. And I think that's reflected in the vote on Proposition 1 last year. I know some disagree, but in my review of the voter guide statements and the press coverage of Proposition 1 last year, it was largely fought on light rail. And I believe that probably our citizens are roughly 60/40 against light rail. Because I don't mind just conveying that fact to the decision-makers on this, but I don't think we should discuss, you know, the cost, the elevation of the bridge, or the general merits of light rail in particular. And so a much simpler resolution would be one that I could support.
Paul?
When I decided to run for council, it was clear to me that I had to choose that role. And part of that role is to represent the city of Waschuggal as opposed to myself. While it is certainly true that everyone in this room has a First Amendment right to a soapbox, I believe deeply that the dais and these chambers are not a soapbox. And that every time we try to turn it into one, we do ourselves and our city damage. Before I was on council, my general principle was, it's easier to ask forgiveness than permission. Can't do that as a council member. You have to turn that around. So in a big way, you have to give up, at least in these chambers, what your own personal feelings might be, and think only about what's good for the city. I don't think that taking any, if you take any position, you lose. Doesn't say that taking no position is a winner, but at least it's not a loser. If you take a position in favor of the bridge, you alienate a whole raft of... If you take a position in favor of the bridge, you alienate a whole raft of people. If you take a position against the bridge, you alienate another raft of people, roughly half on each side. And it is certainly true, as was pointed out, that the, the business community, identity Clark County and the Greater Vancouver Chamber, which incidentally opposed Resolution Initiative One, are clearly in favor of the bridge. And I think there are pretty strong business interests that are in favor of the bridge. If we take a position against the bridge, you then have to go up to Olympia and explain why it is that your project now makes sense. When we were up there last year as part of the AWC Legislative Committee, talking to them about structural defects, their immediate response was, well, you people aren't even using the one percent you have. And I could say to them, that's not true. We have tried to use the one percent every year since I've been on council, and in the past four, we have not been able to because of either the, for, in our case, three dollar and ten cent limit, or because the Consumer Price Index was below one percent. The attitude is, if you don't make use of the tools that you have available to you, they don't take you seriously. There are certainly major powers in Olympia that are strongly in favor of this project, and major powers that are strongly opposed to it. I don't see any reason to alienate either of them. This is not, no matter what we say or what we do, it, it really isn't going to make any difference at all. The only possible thing we could be doing is giving a little bit more cover to Ann Rivers. Ann doesn't need cover from us, and it will certainly alienate the rest of the, I mean, the Democrats on the Transportation Committee. We, we need a hundred million dollars to do our SR fourteen and Thirty-Second Street and all of that. The claim that this will suck up the local funding, actually, I think if you look into the federal transportation budget, mega projects come out of a separate pot. If Washington State does not use that pot, it will go elsewhere, and I don't mean within Washington. General highway funding, that's allocated on a statewide basis, but these mega projects of quote "national importance" are in fact of national importance, and they go, in effect, whoever scores the highest in terms of need. Probably the worst city in the country right now in terms of what's going on with their traffic trends is Atlanta. And they already have, not light rail like the Yellow Line, but subway is more like BART, called MARTA. And there are a bunch of projects that they would love to suck up our three point four billion dollars to spend in Georgia. So, I just don't see that there's any positive thing that can happen by taking a position.
Dave? I want to go back to your initial statement about what our job is as council members. When we were elected to represent the interests of our constituents, they expected us to take positions on things. And they also expected us to do the research to justify those positions. I'm comfortable that we've done that, and we've come up with different conclusions. I'm ready to put it to a vote. I think that, based on the discussion about a shorter resolution and some discomfort with some of the things that are in there, I think we ought to try to decide which things we can accept and which things we can't, right here, we got thirty-four, thirty-four minutes. And if we spent that time profitably doing that, we might come up with a shorter resolution, which is more acceptable to people. But the idea of not having a resolution because we might offend someone, that's not the way I think we should operate. That's not what people set us here to do.
Joyce? I'd like to ask you, Dave, what do you think a resolution will accomplish? What is the positive? I mean, what you just said isn't enough for me. What will a resolution do for Waschugul?
I think it'll do two things. One, it'll tell everybody in the governmental hierarchy above us how we feel about this. And I think that information needs to go forward, because this is the worst project I've ever seen in my life, and I've seen a lot of them, I've managed a lot of them. The second thing I think it'll do is it'll let our constituents know that we are acting in their behalf, and the ballot box is coming up for, for several of us, and if they don't like what we're doing, the way we're acting for them, they certainly have the opportunity to make that known and to put somebody else in our chair.
I think we don't have a representative number of how our, how Waschugul proper really feels about this. Because.
We disagree on that.
Well, say Harvey Olson, I'm sorry, I was mistaken about that, but that still makes it four to two, or four to six. So there still was not an overwhelming, there's not an overwhelming amount of people coming to us being against this.
Those are the same statistics that Brent quoted when we compare what our.
Roughly sixty-four.
Ballot showed sixty-fourty. Our, our town hall showed sixty-fourty. It's falling down, that's the way it's falling.
Joyce is saying she sees sixty-fourty the other direction?
Sixty.
I mean, more people were for it than they were against it at our town hall meeting, so.
That isn't true.
And in Prop one. Not on the ballot last fall.
No, I wasn't talking about.
In the town hall, I have it, I have it right here, we have it, I'm sure we have record of how it came out, I, I made notes.
Maybe we're all watching this from our own point of view, that, I mean, maybe we should watch it together and tally it together, but nevertheless, I don't, even discounting that, I don't know that we have a real feel for how people of Waschugul feel about this project.
I just agree too.
Go back to Paul's, yeah, go back to Paul's very poignant discussion a couple of months ago about responding to loud people on that bridge across the Little Waschugul River. And, and that's, I think that's a caution for all of us. And I, that I think that gets balanced by people you talk to, people who send you emails, people who call you up. I spend a lot of time, I'm getting cauliflower ear here, because I spend a lot of time on the phone. My number's out there, and people call and say, hey, look, I like this, I don't like that.
Well, I have a tendency to agree with Paul that this is not going to get anything for Waschugul, that this is not for us.
Can I show? And you'll be on record for that.
I, I would like to address that comment, in fact, I made notes about it. I've heard that comment numerous times, that this is not a Waschugul issue. Now, it's not, I don't understand how that plays out in people's minds, because, you know, it's not being built here in Waschugul, but it's affecting our community. It will affect, it has affected. We've already spent, well, originally they were offered fifty, about fifty million dollars to do the design, and I can't even, I know it's in writing, if you want me to look it up, I will, but it's in our resolution about how much they've already spent. That is affecting us as a city, that's affecting our income, that's affecting because we pay taxes for that, we paid the bill on that, Waschugul pays that portion. We are individuals in, in Waschugul that make up the city. I, I say this over and over again, my husband was just transferred to Tigard, so now we get to pay Oregon taxes, we get to pay the gas to drive there, and now we're going to get to pay a toll, that affects Waschugul. It's, I understand a hundred percent that you're saying this is not a Waschugul issue, because it's not being built in Waschugul, but it is our world, it is our very immediate world. If you don't work outside of, what, say, Clark County, you don't see a lot of it. And the second point I'd like to make is, I have sat on hun, I could easily say hundreds of hours now, just in the last year and a few months, of meetings, and the pros and the cons of this design. And I think when you, you know, Jennifer, when you're up close and personal, like when you were sitting on the RTC as a, as the backup, the alternate, you see it a lot differently, don't you? When you've been reading statistics, you've sat in meetings, you've been told the pros and the cons, and, and then you have to come away as a representative of your city to make that decision. We as individuals have to finally decide, what do we think our city, how, how do we feel our city will be affected by it? I don't disagree that some of these sound harsh, but the situation is harsh, the, the demand that they're making on us is harsh. And so, I feel it's important, we're being asked, I mean, our own senator was right in this room with us, asking us, yes, please do make a, make a, a res, a, a communication to us, and, and how do we make a communication, but it's through resolution?
Do you know if, if any other cities are, are being solicited that way, as far as?
I don't know if she's visited them or not, but we only got that, quote, solicitation because she came to our meeting for input. I don't know if, if she attended those others. I believe all the others were asked to by the commissioners.
In regard to that recital that's, that's in here, if, if I were in a council seat, I would probably take issue with that one. I don't believe, and certainly from administrative position, we have not been requested by our delegation, which is what I think this reads, for input in regarding the CRC or any parts of it. I know there have been meetings that legislators have been at where they've been asked the question, and I know you asked the question during the, the legislative town hall that was over at Camas High School, how should we do that, what do you, I mean, you could lead somebody to give you an answer. And I heard.
What question?
I heard Ann say, here, communicate to us, talk to us. I didn't hear her come out and say, you should pass a resolution and send it to us.
She said it here that day.
I don't recall that. I know, I know we, and many in the room, received a letter from Senator Benton that personal opinion was begging everybody to, you know, crucify the CRC project. I don't take that as somebody, I don't take that as a delegation asking us for input. That's a whole different thing, so.
So what do you, how do you remember Ann Rivers addressing it?
That's what I was going to say. I think she was responding to the notion that's out there that our opinion is basically irrelevant, this is a done deal.
Well, exactly.
We might offend somebody if we, we say something like this, which, I, I frankly doesn't, you know, if, if it's the right thing to do.
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter. And, you know, I, I think, I don't think we have anything close to a consensus here. And I think two weeks ago, Councilmember Greenley suggested that we ought to follow our process of having a resolution considered two weeks after the workshop. I think we ought to defer the, this action to April.
Two weeks.
And, because I don't think we're going to reach a resolution tonight, and if we do reach a resolution tonight, it'll probably result in no, no resolution being passed.
Dave? I have a different idea. Let's convene the group as, as a, a committee of the whole, and take a look at each one and vote it up or down. So it's in or it's out. Then if you want to reword what's left, work on that. And in terms of the fact that we didn't consider it at a workshop, it was discussed at the workshop very briefly when it was brought up last time, but beyond that, we had a town hall discussion of three hours, so it's not like it hasn't been discussed.
I'm also personally a little bit surprised that we think we have the time to spend on this. Obviously, a whole workshop and much of a council meeting. I mean, don't we have enough other things to think about, whether it's water or sewer, capital facilities plans, sidewalks, streets? How, what do we need to do to make the, the joint fire department work better? Have we thought as much as we need to about the downtown revitalization? What's the next step there? I mean, we've got plenty on our plate, and it really seems to me like this is a distraction, and frankly, a waste of time. It's not, you know, if, if it were, if it were a question of making a tough decision on whether we should build a water line, or in fact, whether we should put the sewer line over the Waschugul River on a footbridge or through the river, that's a serious Waschugul question, that's one that we need to deal with. I strongly believe that our role here is to be fiduciaries for the city, present and future. And on the other hand, that if what you're looking for is a soapbox or a megaphone, then this is not the position for that. That's what legislators do. And if you really want to take positions on all of these things, then run for legislature. It's not our job to represent the whims of the people on this issue any more than it is on the Keystone Pipeline. We have plenty of things that people are really concerned about. Think about how many people came to what was in effect our first town hall, although we didn't call it that, let's call it our zeroth town hall, on utilities. There were many times more people who came to City Hall on that one than on this one, and it affects them very deeply. That is a difficult problem, it will require a lot of work. And I just, to me, I'm, I'm flabbergasted that we think we have time to do this.
Thank you. Dave? We take this up because it's the four billion dollar gorilla in the room.
That's exactly.
It affects our federal taxes, our state taxes, our sales taxes, our real estate taxes, it affects everything. And considering that right now the federal government is borrowing forty percent of every dollar it spends, I think four billion dollars for this is a considerable sum. You're talking about a hundred and sixty million dollars. I, I would like to, I would like to take a position on this. I, I really tire of people trying to shut down the discussion, that's what's going on here. This isn't appropriate, we shouldn't do this, we'll embarrass ourselves. Let's have this discussion, but let's have the discussion on the issue, not on whether or not we should have the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the fact that it's a three point five billion dollar project that has to be borrowed, and you're not paying the interest on that.
That's before the overruns.
That's before the overruns, that's ten billion. And our federal government, I mean, I, you've seen me say it before, we've got federal taxes, we've got state taxes, we've got county, we've got city, real estate, you name them all, they all are paid by me and you. So this is affecting us. This is not a small issue. This is the biggest project that our county's ever faced, I don't know, as far as bridges go. To just roll over and say, do whatever you want, doesn't affect me, is not right, it's not true. I agree with Dave a hundred percent, and with Brent. If we need to whittle this down because you want to say only Waschugul issues, then let's fe, let's focus on the language and let's roll up our sleeves and get to work. the language and let's roll up our sleeves and get to work.
Joyce.
How much will this project cost Waschuggah directly?
Well,
The city or the residents?
The city or the residents?
The residents.
The residents cost my husband. It will cost my husband eight dollars a day.
I, I meant, as, as a, as, if we put in money into this, how much i- is Waschuggah putting into this?
Are we putting anything in through the city? None of our taxes are going to this, so it's our federal taxes.
Yeah, there are, I'm sure, if the project is approved, that through property taxes that the state keeps, through sales taxes, that the state keeps and other means, some of your monies that you pay out in a variety of ways throughout the year could end up helping to pay for this. The city of Waschuggah is not, and I don't believe will ever be asked, to write a check to anyone to help pay for the bridge.
I have some other figures here. And the CRC project will provide twenty, twenty thousand nine hundred and seventy-five jobs through design and construction. By twenty thirty, it will create four thousand two hundred regional and state jobs and then two hundred and thirty-one million in additional wages. Now, if there's a trickle down or trickle out, maybe Waschuggah will pick up some of that through jobs and wages. So, some of this may come the other way, too.
Will also pay the federal taxes.
Thank you.
That figure, twenty thousand jobs, was di- was arrived by taking the fact that there would be approximately two thousand construction jobs over ten years. So they went two thousand times ten years equals twenty thousand jobs. That is not a mathematical method of concluding how many jobs will be coming out of this project. Possibly two thousand people will get jobs for ten years, but you don't get twenty thousand jobs out of that. So, that's what I mean by...
Let me just comment. I, I agree with you that that doesn't really make sense. On the other hand, that is the way that they do it. That is the way that they count jobs for a project, whether it's the Keystone Pipeline, or Boston's Big Dig, or the Big Pipe in Portland. They take the number of jobs and multiply it by the number of years, and that's...
Well, what they come up with is work years, not jobs.
And, and, y- I know that. I know that. But, and I'm not defending them. I'm just saying that that is the normal procedure. That is the normal way of doing things.
And, and I understand that. The one they call it jobs, that's...
I'm not debating that. All I'm saying is that that's the normal way of doing it, and, and they do call it jobs. They don't call it man years, or job years, or work years, or, that's, that's how they do it.
I think you and I would agree about people who do that sort of thing.
Okay, so we're at six fifteen. Um, I kind of cited a rant that I'm not sure that there's a lot of consensus here yet. Do we want to send a discussion on this until we get to council meeting this evening and see where things go at that point?
We're gonna have to deal with it somehow. You wanna do a committee, you wanna do a committee of the whole, uh, during the council meeting? How do you, how do you wanna deal with it? But deal with it. So far, what we've had the discussion about is whether or not we're gonna deal with it.
And that's why I see you continuing that into the, into the council meeting itself. You don't, you don't have the ability to take a vote.
At the council meeting, I, I will move, uh, when the opportunity presents itself, to convene the group as committee of the whole and put it to a vote.
Yep. Jeffrey.
Can we have a little bit more of a roundtable discussion about, um, economic development? And if, if, in the council's opinion, this would have a positive or a negative effect on economic development, potential economic development?
The CRC?
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, not necessarily the CRC, but the fact that we would take a position.
Resolution.
Correct.
Economic development in Waschuggah?
Mm-hmm. Potential economic development.
Do you wanna have that now? Is that?
I'm trying to have the conversation that we should have had two weeks ago, so I can get to a point where I can, I can look, be comfortable with a resolution. I put, um, a resolution together as well and, um, put some points in it, but, I mean...
I'd like to have time to see those. I haven't seen that resolution.
I, I just, it's just very recent, because I just, I couldn't, couldn't get past some of these statements in this one, and I thought, well, let's try and, and...
Can you clarify for me what it is you're looking for? I'm, I'm not getting it.
Well, I, I want a more local-centric, um, resolution if we do indeed decide to pass a resolution. I think it really should all kind of come back around to how it affects Waschuggah residents. And, um, I mean, tolling, tolling on two oh five, Dad's set against that.
And, and some of that is in here. So, by voting up or down, each one of these whereas's, you whittle it down to the point where you can decide if you're comfortable with it.
Jennifer, do you have extra copies of your resolution?
Um...
We can make some.
I don't have any extras. I won.
This is why I think we might wanna continue this to April.
Yes. And this is, this is one you wrote yourself?
I, I just took, I took a lot of points, um, from the, I guess, the second draft. There was the first draft that you sent out, and then you sent out a second draft. And so I took some of those points and...
Well, that's good. I, I'm not opposed to having that discussion at all.
I don't know. I just tried, I tried to keep it, um, very factual as far as, as, you know, trying to bring it back to what our citizens, um, can either be for or against on this project. Not, not necessarily what might happen in Vancouver, or Tri-Met in, in Portland, or other places.
I'm sorry. May I?
That's right.
Do you think that's something we could deal with at the council meeting tonight if we took a look at your reservation, uh, your?
Well, that's up to you. That's up to you. I mean,
Over the break?
I don't wanna suppose anything. I just...
Okay, well.
I, I don't feel comfortable with this resolution. If you put this in front of me tonight, I will probably not vote in favor of it.
I wasn't comfortable with it either, but I was willing to vote for it because, uh, it incorporates everything that I want and some things that I was con- less in favor of, but I give my colleagues some slack on that.
I don't think this was ever intended to be the final word. That's why the giant word draft is sitting there. And we were gonna have this discussion.
Right.
The nice discussion was to chew this up and...
Isn't this a menu?
Yeah, this is a menu.
Pick two from column A and one from column B?
So, I don't wanna, you know, ever leave anybody with the opinion that this is what we were voting on. I never even came to the table thinking that was a case. Thank you.
Well, I don't, I mean, I, I can tell by a lot of the conversation that we don't have a consensus as a council. So I know that there have just been a lot of, of instances in the past on controversial issues where there have been very close votes. And, you know, the person sitting in the middle is a swing, and it's, it's a hard, hard place to be. So, I just, I just don't know. I'm not, I'm not getting a good reading.
You picked up on the lack of consensus, did you?
Yeah, I did. I picked up on that.
Okay, for now, let's go ahead and suspend the, uh, discussion on this item. I don't think, if we go farther, we're just gonna keep going, and we're not gonna get to a point in the time that we've got left, so. Um, we'll take it up in the regular council meeting. Um, going on to, well, an easier topic, uh, prayer before council meetings.
Is that easier?
Dave and Don. That was meant to be a joke.
I'm not sure it's that much easier, but I'll, I'll give you what I've got on it.
Thank you.
I've had a chance to, to review some, um, documentation on this and talked to some other city attorneys, and there was, I think, the, um, county that actually passed a resolution on this. I haven't seen the resolution, but I saw the proposal, so. Basically, the fundamental legal question that is posed by having a prayer at a public meeting is whether allowing the prayer violates the establishment of a religion clause in the US Constitution and the state constitution. So the first thing that everybody looks at, I think this is generally accepted, is the case of Marsh versus Chambers, which is a US Supreme Court case, um, nineteen eighty-three, which upheld a, um, prayer situation in the lit- in the, in the Nebraska Legislature. Um, said there was no violation because of, there was no proselytizing, and there was no disparagement of religion, of, um, another religion. So let me just read the facts real quickly for you, and I'll read just the part of the holding. As a taxpayer, a state legislator brought action challenging constitutionality of practice of the Nebraska Legislature of opening each session with a prayer by a chaplain paid with public funds. The United States District Court for the District of Nebraska enjoined the public payment, but then when it went to the Supreme Court, they, they authorized it. And part of the reasoning, I'll read to you. It says, "In light of the unambiguous and unbroken history of more than two hundred years, there can be no doubt that the practice of opening legislative sessions with a prayer has become part of the fabric of our society. To invoke divine guidance on a public body entrusted with making the laws is not, in these circumstances, an establishment of religion or a step towards establishing, establishment of beliefs widely held among people of this country." So that sounds like, you know, it's really easy, but, um, of course, cases that came along later are divided on, on how that's applied. Next case, significant is the case of Joyner versus, um, Forsyth, which is a Fourth Circuit case from, uh, Carolina. And they took a lot more detail in looking, analyzing the prayer. And what they found was that most of the prayers have been given from a sectarian Christian perspective, and they ruled that, um, that was an establishment of religion. So, um, in that, in their review, they said it was, and so that was appealed to the Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court did not take that case. Read just a little bit of that case for you. It says, "As it stands now, however, the board policy falls short. It resulted in sectarian invocations, meeting after meeting, that advance Christianity, and that made at least two citizens feel uncomfortable, unwelcome, and unwilling to participate in public affairs of Forsyth County. To be sure, citizens in a robust democracy should expect to hear all manner of things that they do not like. But the First Amendment teaches that religious faith stands on a different footing from other forms of speech and observance." So, another case from two thousand eleven was the case of Rubin versus City of Lancaster, a California case. And they came to the opposite conclusion, that mentioning Christianity, at least the, the prayers that they talked about, was not an establishment of religion. Going back to the, to the Marsh case, they said there was no proselytizing, and there was no disparaging of other religions, and so they said it was okay. One thing that hasn't been, um, decided is I, uh, I've been able to find, is there's been nothing under the, um, Washington Constitution. And that can be held to be more, um, narrow or less narrow. And so, these cases that I'm talking about, as well as, there's lots of other ones, too. The litigation bec- come because individuals and organizations challenge if you decided to, um, allow prayer. They decide, they, there's organizations, individuals out there that will challenge that. Doesn't mean that they will for sure here, but it's certainly a possibility and a risk that they would do that.
What would be our exposure done if they did challenge it?
Um, fees would be the major, the major thought, and then also nineteen eighty-three violation of civil rights.
Nineteen eighty-eight, that's where the fees come in.
Well, you, you were ahead of me on that one.
I had to deal with it.
Yeah. I'm ta- not talking about the other person's fees, I'm talking about our fees, too.
Well, our fees and, and if we lose, we lose, we pay their fees, right?
Exactly, yeah. So, um, Councilman Bover pointed this out to me after the last meeting, and there's a good article prepared by Steve DeGiulio, who's a top-notch municipal attorney, probably one of the highest, um, ranking ones or most respected ones in the, in the, in the state. He wrote an article, and, um, he touched on things that I've, I've talked about. It's not a per se violation, it's not an automatic violation to have, to allow for prayer. But the conclusions he came to, I'm just gonna read these to you from an article that he wrote for Municipal Research. Uh, his conclusions were that the test set forth in the Marsh, in Marsh, that's the case I talked about first, the US Supreme Court case, prohibits any legislative prayer from being used to proselytize or advance any one or disparage any other faith or belief in determining whether legislative prayers meet the standards courts have typically considered factors that include the frequency with which sectarian terms are used in legislative prayers, the process of selecting individuals to offer prayers, the diversity of faiths representing the pla- prayers, whether prayers are directed at public or the legislative body. And then he, he finishes by, "The legislative prayers will likely meet the Marsh test if local governments prohibit the use of sectarian language, uh, that is avoidance of references, references to Jesus or other terms that we distinctly associate with a particular religion." However, there is no per se prohibition of the use of sectarian terms or phrases. Recently, the Supreme Court denied review of the ruling relating to the Forsyth County case, that's the one I talked about second, that, that said it was an establishment of religion, um, that the legislative prayer policies are required to protect other minority faiths. It may not be sufficient to have only a policy that claims to prohibit efforts to convert to or disparage another faith or belief. If a prayer policy is challenged, the courts will look beyond the policy and examine the practices of council or commission to determine compliance with Constitution constraints. So, um, my thoughts after reviewing all that is it's, it's not perha- per se prohibited. That means it's not automatically prohibited to have prayer. If you are going to be considering, um, authorizing prayer, I would recommend that, uh, well, first of all, the, the issue is always contentious, as we know. Um, councils should carefully decide whether prayer adds enough to meetings to justify the effort. Secondly, if council decides that prayer is an important part of council meetings, then a formal written policy should be developed and carried out scrupulously. And, uh, my recommendation is we provide for participation by non-religious as well as religious groups, because the courts require not only equality of treatment among religious groups, but also no discrimination takes place against non-religious and irreligious. So that's kind of, without going into, there's lots of other cases, but those are kind of the ones that people look at to, um, kind of do an analysis of it.
Okay, that gives you a context to start with.
Yeah.
We're at, uh, we're at six thirty, we're just bumping into it.
I just have one question. Did you, did you follow what's happening up in Longview with? I've talked to the Longview City Attorney.
Yeah, my former colleague.
Yeah, right. Uh, Jim McAmber, uh, Longview's dealing with this. What he, he gave me a lot of the, the written information that he had, which was good. There's some stuff from McAmber. Of course, they're dealing with it. Now, what he had said was that, um, they had tried to, um, do a policy of this non-sectarian thing where it be kind of a real, for lack of a better word, vanilla prayer.
Rotary club prayer.
Rotary club, where he wouldn't mention any particular deity. And they had asked the local ministerial association to do that, but they, they didn't wanna do that. They wanted to maintain their sectarian view and pray in the name of their...
Which they've been doing since the nineteen fifties, right?
Well, I don't know about how long they've done that.
The Columbia, I guess, is where I got that information.
That's, I, I know it's been a long time, but how far back, I don't know. I know here, and I ran into Mayor Krumpacker in the store the other day, I verified this with him. When I first started in nineteen ninety-two, we did have prayer for a couple of years. And I asked him, as my recollection was, is, it seemed like some of the council members were saying, you know, they weren't, didn't wanna do it and didn't think it was appropriate. So I don't think there was any formal action taken, but we did not continue with that after about nineteen ninety-four, I believe.
I was in council in the mid-eighties.
It was pretty common practice at that point.
It was part of that. We did have council members, and at that time, it was kind of sort of rotated among council members.
Right.
And there were council members that asked not to be in the rotation.
Right.
Real quick. How does an irreligious person participate in this particular process?
That's a good question. Uh, I suppose they might wanna give a statement of, uh, what their belief is in some manner. I, you know, it wouldn't really be an invocation, but, uh...
Can you come in and read a Rod McEwen poem?
I don't know.
Is it, is it a fair comment to, that you would describe this as a minefield?
It's, there's a lot of, um, there's, there's risk involved. There definitely is. Yeah. A minefield, I don't know. That's, that may be.
Okay, my apologies to the public. We're not gonna have time for a second round of, uh, public comments, but we will have public comments at the start of the council meeting. I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn this meeting. We'll take this item up also under our agenda for the regular council meeting to expound on it. So, back here in thirty minutes. Twenty-nine minutes.